This is our August 21st Bowling Green Warren County Planning Commission meeting. And Matthew, if you would call the roll, please, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, you all had in your packets the minutes of our August the 7th meeting. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we call for motion, please.
Motion to be approved.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, in our packets, we had our subdivision site development plans. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none, and they will be submitted as approved as submitted. Mr. Peterson is back there. Rachel, where have you been business?
No, sir.
Any old business?
No, sir.
We will now enter our public hearing. And Mr. Moore?
Thank you. Mr. Warren, I'd request that you order that the record denied include all relevant statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application before you, and the qualifications of each of the staff witnesses. Finally, I'd ask that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much. Ben, are you back there? Would you put up the how the when we do our who? What's Russell Wright or Rachel?
You're talking about the meeting rules of conduct.
Yes.
And I don't know that we have those tonight. We are having technical difficulties with some of our equipment.
Okay.
But we can review those, just if you like.
You want to do it real briefly, or you want me to?
Either works. I was trying to see if I could pull this up.
So this is a public hearing, and we have three applications tonight. The applicants will make their presentation and or their representative, and then we have a time after that for a public hearing. We have three minutes for each person that has an opposition or question to this request, and we stick pretty close to that. Or if there's somebody, the opposition, they have a representative, they do their spiel. So is that fair?
Yes, that's fair. And then after all of the public testimony from anyone who's interested in a particular item, then the applicant would have the closing argument at the end before you all weigh in on your decision.
So that's why Rachel is smart. Our first item tonight is 2025-38ZBG, First Christian Church of Bowling Green, care of Kit Tolbert, has filed an application to rezone 1.8 acres located at 1106 State Street, parcels approximately 54 feet northwest of the intersection of Chestnut Street and east 11th Avenue, and parcels approximately 87 feet southwest of the same intersection from general business, RM multifamily residential and CB business to CB central business with the general development plan. Sir?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in May for the property at 1106 State Street and basically everything that's outlined in red on the aerial view. And the request before you this evening is mainly a cleanup of the zoning. As you mentioned in what you were reading through, the zoning is split current GB, RM4, and central business. And what has triggered this application before you this evening is just some renovations and modifications that the church has underway. And the structure as it currently exists is legal non-conforming, and so in order to do some of these updates and renovations, they needed to come in and seek a zone change and get some things cleaned up. So in our review of the application, we found that the proposal complies with the majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and found the proposal to be generally compatible with the surrounding area. We just have one item for your consideration, and that's on page three, looking at signage. The zoning ordinance permits freestanding signs up to 15 feet in height and up to 50 square feet in sign face area in the proposed CB zone. This property is also in the College Hill Local Historic District, which includes design guidelines that further suggest that freestanding signs should be no taller than four feet or wider than eight feet. And the existing monument-style sign fronting State Street and other freestanding signs in the vicinity and in the College Hill Local Historic District are smaller in height and sign face area than what the zoning ordinance allows. And so for this reason, staff suggested that the applicants consider including an additional development plan condition restricting the height and sign face area for any new freestanding sign, but this was left unaddressed. So that was our one thing that we wanted to point out for your consideration in the staff report. But other than that, our recommendation is for approval pending public hearing and testimony and any further discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for staff?
Rachel, are there? I noticed there's not any conceptual drawings or schematics related to the proposed renovation. Do they exist?
Yes, that's what's on the screen, and it's just really hard to tell. The main renovations are interior to the building, but there are some exterior renovations on the rear facade that's more visible from the Chestnut or 11th Avenue side. And they've actually already gone before the Historic Preservation Board and have received approval of those modifications and have a certificate of appropriateness to complete those things.
And they're doing those right now?
Yes.
Correct.
They've started, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
So they're already under development as far as the concepts?
Yes, I don't think they're that far along. I think they've just recently started in the last week or so. You may want to ask the applicant for further clarification on that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Starks. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? All right. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here or the representative anything you would like to add?
I'm sorry.
Would you come to the microphone, please? Yes, ma'am. And your name and address, please.
My name is Kit Tolbert. Address 187 Fox Runway, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Ms. Tolbert, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Anything else you would like to add?
No, I will clarify that we did just start this past a week ago, Monday, on the exterior. But other than that, I think she covered everything that was.
What about the signage?
We aren't, the only signage we have, we're planning on a little seat wall on a patio, and the only signage we have would be along that seat wall. It'd be say First Christian Church.
That's already been approved by the Historic Preservation Board.
Okay, all right, all right.
So do we need to do anything further then on the signage portion of it?
It's up to you. They have no plans on replacing their sign that's currently along the State Street side, but this would just be in the event that they desire to do that later. We were just pointing that out. But if it's not a concern, that's no problem.
No issue. And then Ms. Tolbert, you have already gone before the historic planning, the historic board and got that approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tolbert. Is there anyone in the audience tonight has a question or opposition to this request? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, a call for motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon a general development plan, DACA number 2025-38ZBG. Based upon the testimony and DACA presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted FOCUS 2030 comprehensive plan administered by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests, this include, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir. The motion is approved, and it's planning commission final action in 21 days unless a request is made to the legislative body to hear the item. Our next item tonight is 2025-39C County, HC Developers LLC, care of Kenny Cravens and John Huggins, had filed an application to rezone 30 point, 30 approximately 30 acres located at 2530 Plum Springs Road from Ag to RE Residential State to RS1D Single Family Residential with the general development plan. Ms. Hurt?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting back in May for the property you just referenced located on Plum Springs Road. It includes everything outlined in red on the aerial view. And as you mentioned, the request involves rezoning approximately 30 acres from Ag and RE to RS1D Single Family Residential in order to develop the property with a maximum of 130 single-family residential lots. The current zoning map is up for your reference. Again, the property is Ag and RE, and the current land use is agriculture and vacant. The future land use designation is moderate density residential. And then I believe we should have some property photos that we can flip through and can reference those as needed, and then we'll leave it up with the proposed lot layout and concept plan as we move through the rest of the staff report. I will touch on the property history, just noting that Ag and RE are the original zoning or Ag is the original zoning for the property. The portion currently zoned RE was designated as RE in 2014. And this may look familiar to some of you. The planning commission did consider a previous application on this property back in 2021, and at that time had recommended denial of the former application. Looking at our review criteria, we did find that the proposal complied with the majority of what we assessed in the review process and found that the proposal may be compatible with the surrounding area. We do have a couple of items we want to point out for your consideration. The first relates to the proposed lot width, and that's going to be noted on page two under the layout lot sizes and setbacks section of the site characteristics review. And the staff has noted that the setbacks, lot size, and lot width will adhere to the RS1D development standards as set forth in the zoning ordinance, with the exception of lots adjacent to the North Ridge subdivision. In such case, the minimum lot width shall be 70 feet, and this is detailed in development plan condition number three. The concept plan also depicts wider lots adjacent to many of the homes fronting Mormon Lane, though there is no requirement in the development plan conditions that the lots be developed with those wider widths as shown. The second item we wanted to point out is going to be on page three under the surrounding architectural features, and this relates to the proposed minimum home size. So just to give you an idea of what's in the existing area, residences fronting Plum Springs Road from Mormon Lane to Olive Springs Road range from 911 square feet to 2,385 square feet with a median home size of 1,563 square feet. Looking at the residences fronting Mormon Lane from Plum Springs Road to 1701 and 1750 Mormon Lane, these range from 1,128 square feet to 3,400 square feet with a median home size of 1,387 square feet. Looking at the homes in McKinney Farms, they are required to include a minimum of 1,400 square feet of living area. Homes in North Ridge have an 1,100 square foot minimum home size requirement, and the minimum home size in Cedar Point is 1,200 square feet. The applicants are proposing a minimum home size of 900 square feet, and this is detailed in development plan condition five, along with a requirement that a minimum of 20% of the residences shall contain at least a minimum home size of 1,100 square feet. And staff has noted that the proposed 900 square foot minimum is lower than a majority of the minimum and median home sizes in the area. The proposed home size of 1,100 square feet for a minimum of 20% of the homes is consistent with North Ridge, but not with the other neighborhoods that we've identified in that section of the staff report. So those are the items we wanted to point out for your consideration. But other than that, looking back at page one, the staff's recommendation is for approval pending public hearing testimony and discussion. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. So Rachel, go back to point number five on page four.
On page four.
The general development plan and development.
Okay.
Yeah. So explain that again one more time so we can understand it.
Sure. Yes, so looking at development plan condition five on page four, the applicant is proposing that at least 20% of the residences shall have a minimum of 1,100 square feet of heated living space exclusive of porches, and all of the residences shall have a minimum of 900 square feet of heated living space exclusive of porches and garages. And all residences shall have a minimum of an attached one-car garage.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Majority of them are going to be less than 1,100 square feet?
Yeah.
As proposed, only 20% would have to contain that 1,100 square foot minimum home size, yes.
Rachel, what is the, what is the density of most of the neighborhoods around? Am I missing that?
We have our density analysis at the bottom of page two, and we just calculated that based on the radius that's contained within HN 1.2.
Correct.
And so you can see that densities range from within 1,000 feet of this property from zero to 5.38 dwelling units per acre with a median density of roughly two and an average density of right around two as well. And the proposed density is 4.29.
The 5.38, what is it, you know?
That is likely going to be an existing, probably just a smaller non-conforming lot where if you took just the one dwelling unit that's on the property and divide it by the acreage.
Oh, okay.
It's probably just going to come out to be a.
It's probably not a neighborhood.
It's probably, probably not. Just for reference, I did, I thought this question might come up. So just for reference, some of the sewered subdivisions that are within the view of the map here, North Ridge, we have 2.04 for that density. Cedar Point, which would be on the left-hand side of Plum Springs Road, that has a density of 2.76. McKinney Farms, just to the north of that, has a density of 2.77. There was a recent application, it's not shown on the zoning, it'll be just to the northeast side of the screen, but there was a recent application before you all for some twin homes in North Ridge that has a density of 3.4. Harmony, which would also be just on the east side of the screen here, that has a density of 3.71. And then there was also an RM3 proposal on Mormon Lane in the general area that has a density of around eight dwelling units per acre. And then Countryside Manor, which would be just to the south, has a density of around just below five dwelling units per acre.
Mr. Volker, say to answer your question?
Yeah, yes, sir.
That was a hesitation.
So, so one more question, Rachel.
Go ahead, Chris, let Christian.
No, no, go ahead, Tim. I was, yeah.
The, in the DPC, I see exterior facade addressed, but am I overlooking the foundation exterior?
We can check on that. Let's see here.
Inside.
That might be a question for the applicant. As currently worded, the foundation material, it must be their intent that it include one of those materials, but that might be worth asking them.
Okay, and then, so I guess my next question is, let's go back to the density. It sounds like generally it's around two to two and a half dwelling units per acre in that, in that area. Am I missing that? You've got a couple of.
Maybe up to three.
Maybe up to three? Okay.
Yeah, so the, and we're just using HN 1.2 as a guide, and that just suggests that we capture 1,000-foot radius, and it recommends that the density shouldn't be more than one and a half times the average within that 1,000-foot radius. It is just a guide. The future land use map for this property is moderate density residential. I think it's a little different when you've got a mix of established neighborhoods that were developed on septic, but then you also have, you know, the option for sewer, which comes with those higher densities, so you all just have to weigh that however you see fit.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense. And then just to check my math here, if, if there were 130 units here, 26 of them would be 1,100 square feet, and the remaining 100 and whatever would be 900 square feet.
The minimum. So the minimum would have to be, the minimum 26 would be.
The rest of them could be 900.
900 or whatever.
Yeah.
26, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Volker, any other questions? We cut you off.
No, sir. No, I'll, I'll wait.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or the representative here?
Will Kilgore, 1010 College Street, swear to tell the truth.
Mr. Kilgore, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So I'm here, I represent the applicant, HC Developers. Here with me tonight, both John Huggins and Kenny Cravens, they are the principals of HC Developers. They're also local real estate professionals. I also have Brian Shirley here, who is the engineer on the project. The staff has summarized the application, so I'm not going to kind of rehash everything, but I will hit on the points of consideration that they addressed. The first one, so the lot width. So when we first submitted our application, it was pointed out to us that we submitted a concept plan that had 140 lots rather than the 130, so we corrected that. As part of that, there was a point to consider that referenced the lots on the North Ridge adjacent to North Ridge. So that was the reason that we addressed that, you know, the intention being that to the extent we can on the perimeter, we want to try and align those lot lines as much as possible. But again, the point to consider being specific to North Ridge, that's the reason that we included North Ridge in the DPC. The next one, the minimum square footage, you know, the 900, I think it's been pointed out, but that is a minimum. We do have a 20% requirement for 1,100 square feet. We expect there to be a range of house sizes in this development. The reason for that 900 square feet being pretty similar to the reason for the reduction of square footage in a recent application you all heard for a DPC amendment for property located on Elrod Road and Small House Road, which was Stagner Farms. But again, that being, which was an application you all approved, but the reasoning being that, you know, there's a 2023 housing needs assessment that highlighted, you know, the need for, you know, first-time home buyer, single-family residential-sized homes kind of in that $200,000 range. And, you know, that's the, the plan here is to meet a critical community need to have affordable housing. You know, we, we want to do a good quality development. Again, we think the DPCs kind of speak to that. You know, we think it'll be an asset for the area. We'd also, we'd like to highlight, obviously, some of the amenities that we intend to include as part of this development. As you can see, we have the green space up at the north that will also have a walking trail and a playground, as well as a picnic shelter. We're going to have dual sidewalks, a requirement of the one-car garage, as well as what we think will be an attractive wood plank fencing around portions of the perimeter of the property. Then to kind of hit on, you know, what else has come up here, the density matter, I know some of you all were here back in 2021, 2022, when it originally came about and was ultimately denied. Or I'd like to kind of hit on, I guess, a few things, kind of a then versus now analysis. You know, at the time, which, you know, predates my practicing in law in Bowling Green, my understanding is that the staff didn't used to make recommendations, however, they do now, which here they have recommended this for approval. They've indicated that this meets a majority of the review criteria, understand that they're still for you all to determine. However, I'd also point out that density was not noted as a point of consideration. You know, kind of to hit on, as Rachel said, the 1,000-foot radius being, you know, the recommendation for viewing for density increases, and we note that that is, you know, here we would be looking at, you know, the 3.31. However, if you kind of broaden that a little bit to say 2,500 feet, 3,000 feet, so kind of in the general area, and Rachel can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that that would look at an average of about 3.79 dwelling units per acre, which if you applied the HN 1.2 increase recommendation would give us a maximum of 5.69 dwelling units per acre, which we're, we're well below. Kind of hit on a few other things that have occurred that the staff has also mentioned, you know, since that 2022 application, there was the approval in January of 2023 of the RM3 property that's outside of 1,000 feet, but it's just around the corner on Mormon Lane with the eight dwelling units per acre. You know, there's also, as Rachel mentioned, that Countryside Manor, it's an older subdivision, but it has the 4.92. Kind of some other things just to hit on, I know at the 2022 rezoning, a big topic of conversation or focal point was the North Ridge subdivision and it being at the 2.04 dwelling units per acre. However, as was referenced then, we'd want to bring up now that, you know, that subdivision, to my understanding, was done prior to the flume, but, you know, the flume being what it is now, we are in the moderate density side of Plum Springs, moderate density allowing for up to 13 dwelling units per acre. What we're asking for here is obviously on the bottom end of what is allowable. In that flume designation, again, kind of the purpose here, obviously, again, being that, you know, we want to meet a critical need for the affordable housing, and we're trying to target those first-time home buyers. We're trying to put forth what we think is an application for a, for quality development that, again, will be an asset for the area. With that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions or address any concerns staff may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Kilgore?
I've got a question for Rachel. When we denied this in '21, do you remember what the density they were asking for?
They were asking for 140 lots. Is that correct?
In '21?
140. I can't remember. I know it was more than what they're asking for. I can try and look it up.
I'm just curious.
And see if I can figure that out for sure. I do know that this is, is less, but it might be 10 lots less or 20. Let me see if I can find that.
Okay. Also, I think they came back in 2022, they proposed 130, however, they, they wanted to do twin homes as well. But I don't know what the density was then.
Mr. Kilgore, I mean, a couple of things that I would start with that to your client, are you willing to reduce the lots, the lots from 100, you know, 130? And if I just do quick math and I use a three and a half density, that's about 106.
Yeah.
Yeah, would you, would you be willing to do that? And then would we be willing to do a minimum square foot of 1,100 on all the houses?
Thank you for that point. You know, it's something I can, obviously, I'll discuss to my client, maybe something that's a little bit more than we can answer on the fly, especially with the reduction in lots. Understand there's development costs that would go into factoring that decision, but...
So Will, I wanted you, go ahead and field the questions, and then you guys can have some discussions if you want to.
Well, before you, I have one other question you might field with your client, and this may be redundant to what Christian is requesting. Would your client consider, instead of 20% of the homes being 900 square, 1,100 square feet, would you consider 35%?
I'm asking.
He's asking for 100.
Yes.
I was asking for all of them.
All of them.
Just to make sure, did you say all of them be 1,100?
Yes.
Minimum, minimum 1,100.
I echo his request. Did you, Tim, did you get an answer on the, on the foundations?
Not yet, and I was going to, I was going to address that, and then...
Not yet, and I was gonna, I was gonna address that and then, Will, one minor correction, I understand what you, I think I understand what you meant when you stated that, that Elrod Road development had come back here and asked for a reduction, and that is exactly right. But the key there was, that was a flume amendment. We haven't heard, that one hasn't come back yet. Pardon me?
Are you talking about the meeting two weeks ago?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think the discussion we had two weeks ago was, we didn't feel the 900 feet would fly.
Exactly right. We told them that we did not think that would get approved.
And so I'm referring to the DPC amendment hearing, I think it was back in May.
At the roundabout, the development plan amendment?
Staggered.
That was approved.
Yeah, 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 I remember that one.
But I think for one we did two weeks ago, we.
But it wasn't.
It was a reduction from 1,000 feet to 850, 850 being the minimum. Again, it was a 3-2 passing, but it was a.
Got it, understood. And so I get it, I understand what your client's trying to do. Clearly, there's a need.
Brickerstone.
Okay, sorry, the majority.
Tim, the foundations on there, brickerstone or anything?
Brickerstone. The building materials.
What number is that?
It's on page three.
Yeah, but what number?
It's under building material review.
And so, Will, if, am I overlooking it? Does, does it, does it specify the, the foundation material in the DPCs?
It does not, and so I've actually, before coming up here, I've been authorized by my client, we're going to amend the building materials to include the foundation. The foundations will align with the North Ridge foundations, which my understanding is plain-faced block.
I think those are split-faced blocks.
It's split-face.
But we intend to do what is in North Ridge as split-face.
Okay, so, so we would, we would do, I guess, we would add something in there, Hamp, to specify that, or would that be a separate DPC for you?
Probably put that at the end of the folder.
Okay. And then, and then so, Rachel may have hit on this, does, so what this permits is, of course, the square footage at 900, but it also seems to permit 100% vinyl. How does that align with, say, North Ridge and some of the others?
That, that's consistent with the homes in North Ridge. A majority of those are vinyl.
What about some of the, what about some of the newer neighborhoods we've done here in the last couple of years? Because North Ridge was done.
Should be.
12 years ago.
The building materials review on page three. Homes fronting Plum Springs Road are a mix of brick and vinyl. North Ridge is mostly vinyl with split-face block foundations. Residences on Mormon Lane are a mix of vinyl, brick, stone, wood, stucco, and Masonite siding. And the development plan conditions for Cedar Point require that exteriors consist of vinyl, brick, stone, drive-it, cement-based siding, man-made stone, or other modern masonry materials. There's no limit on the percentage of vinyl.
Very good.
So it's fairly consistent with what's in the area.
Okay, and then I think I understand what the intent is here. If I look at number five, the last sentence reads, "All residents shall at minimum have and attached one garage." And I, clearly, that's probably supposed to say one-car garage, correct?
Yeah, I think that's.
So, so, so Will, I think the thing for, for you and your client, we get it. We know that there's a need for affordable housing. The only question we have to ask ourselves is.
Density.
Where does it fit? You know, how does, how do we do that and still maintain compatibility? And somewhere in there, there's, there's something that's acceptable, and somewhere in there, there's something that doesn't fit. And so that's probably a conversation for you to have with your client.
Understood, and there's no further questions. I will have that, that conversation.
Will, why don't you go back there, before we hear from the audience tonight, you and your clients have that discussion.
And that way you can hear any other issues that come up, because he's gonna get an opportunity to close, correct?
Oh, he is.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Will, there's a conference room right over behind Mr. Shirley.
Thank you very much.
Hey, so Rachel, quick question for you. I see where it says the minimum, the minimum 70 feet in the rear. So is that, is that, am I reading that correctly? Number three, a what, lock width of 70 feet at the rear of the property line?
Yeah, I think that's because some of them in the curve.
Oh, okay.
That the front edge is gonna, just because of the curve, would be less than that, yeah.
And so Rachel, one last housekeeping item. I know they verbally stated that they were, they wanted them to align with North Ridge, but do we need to put that in a DPC? I think you said there's no requirement for that to happen.
There is on the North Ridge portion.
There is, okay, very good, thank you.
Rachel, do we have the depth of the lots?
I'm not sure, you'll have to ask Mr. Shirley when the applicants all return to the room.
Okay, Will.
All righty, so I talked to my clients.
Jody, Jody.
And if I need to get them up here, just let me know. But, yeah, I've been authorized, so, you know, what we're willing to propose is that we can go down to 120 lots, which my understanding would be sub four, the 3.96 dwelling units per acre, and we would commit to doing a 50% minimum of 1,000 square feet and 50% minimum of 1,100 square feet, which would allow us to get down to that, or would be required for that 120 lot.
Say your last one again.
So a minimum square footage of 1,000 square feet and a 50% being a minimum square footage of 1,000 and 50% being a minimum of 1,100 with 120 lots. And again, I would reiterate, you know, on the density side of things, you know, again, we're on the moderate-density side of Plum Springs. We're asking for the low end of what's permitted in the moderate density, as well as, you know, if you look at the area as a whole outside of the 1,000 feet, but not significantly outside of the 1,000 feet, there's an argument to be made that the 5.69 dwelling units per acre would be what would be under that HN 1.2. And again, we're, we're now below four. So I think, you know, again, we're just trying to put forth a, an application for, you know, a quality development that will be of benefit to this area, and I think that this achieves that.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Kilgore? So their proposal is 120 lots, 50%, 1,100 square feet, is that right, Will?
Yes, so 120 lots, 50% with a minimum square footage of 1,000 square feet, 50% with a minimum square footage of 1,100 square feet.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Kilgore or the applicants?
Can I confirm one thing in the change to the home size? Is it your intent that you keep the similar wording in DPC 5 as far as those home sizes being heated living space exclusive of the porches and garages?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's, there's a commitment that foundations shall be built of brick, stone, and/or split-face.
Split-face blocks, that's correct.
All right, Mr. Kilgore, thank you very much. Commissioners, any other question? Commissioners, any other questions for applicant? All right. Is, in the audience tonight, is there, do y'all have a representative or anyone, any one person, or does anybody like to make a comment regarding? Mr. Allen, come on up here.
Yes, sir.
Your name and address.
Jody Allen, 527 Foxmore Drive.
Jody, swear to tell the truth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. I'll try, I'll try to be brief. Quick history lesson. I, I developed North Ridge in, started in 1999. So at that time, we were allowed two units per acre, and we had to cut out 50 acres of open space, because that was the flavor of the time, flavor of the month at the commission at that time, was we need, we need open space. So that's how that development got started, and it's continued on until this last day we were here for the last section. The section that abuts this property that goes to Plum Springs Road, those are, those are bigger lots than the original North Ridge at 75 feet. Eighty, those lots were 85 feet in North Ridge. The vast majority of them are 85 feet, some are 75 feet. The lots that back up to this development are 100 feet. So, and, and those, and those specifications, I think, increased to 1,500.
Jody, you're talking about width or depth?
The, the, the street that kind of parallels, that runs out to Plum Springs Road from North Ridge.
Got it, okay.
You can, you, I mean, you can obviously say they're bigger lots. So those were designed specifically to be larger lots. Since then, you've had McKenny right across the street, I think, Rachel, tell me if I'm wrong, I think they're at three. You've got Rodney Rogers across the street at Prime Grove, I think they're at three. I did Harmony down the road, that was a fight to get three at that time. The one they're referencing at 5.69 is the townhome parcel that was done down Mormon Lane, which has yet to be developed, still sitting there. So, and then they want to go to Countryside, well, that's, most of that's RM4 multifamily. The single families are the same density that, that everybody else is over there. Now, I say all that to tell you how this, how this part of the county developed. We started at two, we've been really maxed at three. Up on the corner of Plum Springs Road, those are acre lots. So it's a little deceiving to throw those numbers out, because that's not this area. And, and we've been here multiple times trying to get a little bit bigger. And, and again, I'm the, I'm the biggest proponent of housing in this, in this room. And so I would simply say that there's been multiple attempts to, to develop this property at a far greater density than anything that's even close around it. My, my, my thought is, I'm 100% behind it at three, at three units an acre, just like everybody else is. That matches the density of the neighborhood and everything that surrounds it. You know, I don't know what else to say, it's, it's been.
So, so Jody?
Yes, we all know there's a need for affordable housing. I've done that for 25 years, and it seems to me that we're, we're stuck in a race to the bottom of how small can we build a lot, how many can we cram in one spot, especially in a rural area? I'm 100% for this in the right location, but this, that, that style is not the right style for this particular location. I'm 100% for that at about.
Jody, say what you're, so you're against it or you're for it?
I'm against the density at five or four, whatever. I would be 100% behind it at a density of three, just like everybody else is within a mile radius of this project that's a single family, that is a single-family residence.
Got you. So your biggest objection is the density and, and not necessarily the square footage?
Well, I, I think, Rachel, you're talking about, North Ridge is 1,100?
1,100, yeah. So they're at 1,000, at 50% 1,000, 50% at 1,100. Okay.
1,000's small, 1,100, honestly, you, you, it's hard to build an 1,100 square-foot house. You're basically gonna be pushed to 1,200 if you're gonna fit three bedrooms in there. At 1,000, 1,100, that's a, that's a two-bedroom house, that passed.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jody.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience tonight that would like to make a comment regarding this request? Something different than what Mr. Allen said? Yes, anybody? Whoever wants to come first? The young lady gave me a sticker tonight. Jesus loves you, amen.
Anyways.
Yes, sir, your name and address.
Jamie West, 1607 Calgary Way, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Yes, sir, something different, Mr. West?
Well, there, there've been clear-cutting too much out there for number one. We need to preserve what we got. That's why people move into this area to enjoy nature and stuff. That's why people move out in the suburbs to enjoy that and experience being more out, away from city life. And number two, all that wooded area right there blocks a lot of high winds and problems and stuff. It brings nature to the area. It is a beautiful place to have nature still in a small little spot. But the thing is, and also these tiny, teeny, weensy houses they want to build, is gonna draw more of your drug trafficking and all that kind of stuff.
We can't, we, we won't, we won't discuss that here.
Okay.
We won't discuss that.
We appreciate your comments about the nature and the tree lines, but we don't know about the drugs, what Mr. Volker said.
Yeah, usually when you have low-income homes, that's what happens.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
So we need to, on the other note, we need to stop the clear-cutting. There's gated communities around here that, that have a lot of beautiful woods around them and everything else. So we need to preserve our, our out in the suburbs area instead of cut, clear-cutting everything down all the time.
All right, thank you, sir. Something, something else different than clear-cut, nature's, traffic? Yes, somebody else? Yes, something different? Yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am, your name and address, please?
Shirley Moore, 1643 Calgary Way.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Moore, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Yes, sir, your, yes, ma'am, your comments? You have three minutes.
Okay, my first comment is, I set on close to a half acre. My house is over 1,450 square feet. What you're proposing will take the property value down on this, all of the subdivisions and including Mormon Lane. Whenever we get ready to sell, the property that they're proposing will be used as comp in the real estate field. So if they are building that smaller square footage with that less of a price, then it's bound to affect the selling price of all the other houses in the area, which I understand everybody wants to own a home, but not necessarily at somebody else's expense. Plus, I was wondering if there is no requirements to pur. Plus, I was wondering if there is no requirements to purchase the lots, does this mean that somebody can come in and just build one of these minimum-size situation homes and then just rent it versus actual ownership? What is to prevent that? I just, you know?
Well, that, that, that can happen.
It can or can't?
It can.
Yeah, and I was just wondering if that's the case, not all people that rent do not take care of property, but there are some that it's just someplace that if they don't own it, they don't take care of it as well as a ownership does.
Sure, yes, ma'am.
So I was just concerned about all of the above. I mean, like I said...
I mean, and I appreciate your comments. That, that is something we don't take into consideration when we're looking at a planning and zoning of a neighborhood.
Okay.
But that does bring up a good point. Rachel, does it have an HOA?
Yes.
North Ridge has a HOA. I pay fifty dollars a year.
Yes, I'm sorry, no, yeah, there it is, there it is, okay.
Yeah, number twelve.
Okay. Which the HOA is there to, to, to monitor the stuff that you're talking about.
So is this property that they're proposing, does it have a HOA?
Yes, ma'am.
It does.
Yes, there's a requirement that they include an HOA for this.
Do they have a cost factor or am I not allowed to?
No, that's not something...
That's not something we, we do.
Okay, I did note in Sunday's newspaper, there was a property in North Ridge subdivision that sold for over two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Okay.
So if you're going to put something in, please let it be comparable to what the area property values are at the present given moment.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Moore. So Ms. Moore was talking about property values, comp, comparable houses to the acre, the values, and Ms. Hurt answered the HOA question. Any other comments? Yes, sir, you've already spoken, yes, sir, back here.
About Brooklyn Head coming in.
Yes, sir, your name and address, please?
Duder Biggs.
Biggs?
Duder Biggs.
All right, Mr. Biggs, your address? Address?
I'm sorry.
Your address?
Eighteen fifty Mormon Lane, the one with the two red dots.
All right, you swear to tell the truth, Mr. Biggs? You going to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All righty. We'll start off at eighteen fifty Mormon Lane. I've been living there forty years, and I've been over every inch of the property that y'all got marked off up there on the planning thing there.
Uh-huh.
And there are sinkholes all over it, there's thirty, forty sinkholes on it. You can drop rocks down it and hit water. When I built my house, I had to move it up a little bit to get away from it. The water starts from seven seventy-two, the spring does, seven seventy-two Plum Springs Road. Then it comes through to Walton's property, my property. You drop rock, hit sinkholes on my property. But from seven seventy-two, it goes all the way through there, it comes out at thirty-one seventy-four Plum Springs Road. Big cave, twelve foot wide. Years ago, back in the early eighties, they done a research on it, so I think it was something from Western at one time. Put dye in it, see where it come out? And, uh, catch the rabbit, see where it come out? But it came out on the third thirty-one seventy-four, eighty-four Plum Springs Road. From there it left, it came out on, on the five twenty-six. And from there, I don't know where it come from there, I saw that information I had of that.
Okay.
But anyway, like I said, which is going to put a hundred and thirty houses there, okay, a hundred and thirty? You got, everybody gets two cars, that's two hundred and sixty more vehicles. Well, they got a kid, that's three hundred and ninety vehicles. If they got two kids, that's five hundred and twenty, five hundred and twenty kids. You put five and twenty on that, then you go with all the rest of them. We've got all kinds of interests coming in there. We got Metta View coming, Cedar Point, Mechanic Farm, the ball of houses there. Plum Springs Road, to be exact, shoulder to shoulder, it's twenty foot and nine inches. Plum Springs Road, I mean Mormon Lane, is nineteen foot and nine inches from shoulder to shoulder. Black tie, the rest of it's gray. And you put all these cars on it, what's that going to create? How many times we, have y'all, anybody got a piece of, have y'all done any research on all the work that's going on out there, accidents and everything?
Mr. Biggs?
And everything else?
Yeah, I think you've brought a lot of good points. Can you hear me?
The what now?
Can you hear me?
I hear you there, yeah.
All right, I'm going to yell.
That'll work.
Okay.
They might not like it, but I hear you.
No, that's okay, thank you.
I run, wait, let me say one thing real quick.
All right, real quick.
I run dogs fifty-two years, why, and I've been every subdivision in town doing dog work on new homes?
Yes, sir.
And every one of them in town, but I've never seen nothing like this, trying to be cramped here.
Okay, all right. So we, we don't need to call the developers up here, they have to take care of the water and the sinkholes, they have to take care of that, okay? They, they can't put water on anybody else, is that right, Mr. Shirley?
Right, right now, none of the water goes on none of the neighbors down there that comes off. We get water off Mormon Lane in front of me, all the, I live off the road a little bit, all the houses there in front, I get the water off it. But on the other side of Mormon Lane, it comes down the road, then crawls over, then goes back on Walton's.
Okay, but right now, they, they have to, the developers, if this project's approved, they have to take care of their own water.
Right.
And Ms. Hurt, correct me if there's not a traffic study required?
Correct, that is on page three, under the traffic analysis section of your report. Staff from both the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and the Warren County Public Works Department have reviewed the proposal and have determined that there are no improvement, no improvements necessary to accommodate the proposed development. The Kentucky Transportation Cabinet will require an access permit for the development entrance along Plum Springs Road, and the location of the development entrance shall be coordinated with and approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, and the applicants agree to these requirements in their development plan conditions.
So there will have to be an entrance put in on, off Mormon Lane, or...
Plum Springs Road.
Plum Springs, excuse me. Okay. And your, our time's about up. And so the sinkholes will be taken care of, Mr. Biggs? The, the traffic has been approved by the Highway Department? Okay? Is that clear?
Yeah.
Okay. And the developers have moved the lot size to a hundred and twenty? So that's what they're proposing? So that's what this board is going to decide today?
Okay, can I ask something now?
One more. Yes, sir, one more.
Oh, one more? Okay, let me ask you all this, if we go through all this, what about a privacy fence around it? If not leave the border line where all the trees are around it? Because mine is surrounded by trees. If you go in there and take all them down, then back door to back door on everybody.
There, there is a requirement in development plan condition thirteen that the property be developed with a do not disturb buffer within ten feet of the perimeter property lines in order to preserve existing mature, healthy trees during development. And any, it does go on to say that any dead, dying, or decaying trees and vegetation may be trimmed or removed. So there is a commitment in the development plan conditions, but as far as a fence, that would be something that the developer and the applicant...
There's not a fence proposed, but any of the trees within ten feet stay there unless they're dead?
No, I didn't get you.
Okay. There's not going to be a privacy fence?
All right.
You got that?
Got that.
And then within ten feet of the property lines, the mature trees will be preserved unless they're dead?
Okay, I understand.
Okay. Okay. All right, all right, thank you, Mr. Biggs.
Hi.
All right, thank you, thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else, something, something different than, that has not been, yes, ma'am, one more, and we'll... And your name, please?
Brianna Kessinger, twenty-six eighty-eight Plum Springs Road.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Kessinger, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
All right, and your comments, please?
Well, safety concerns for one, I have a child. I don't know what we're allowed to talk about and what we're not, but there's a lot of, I'll just put it lightly this way, sex offenders already surrounding in the area.
There's what?
No, we can't talk about that.
No, can't speak on that, okay, but that should be a concern for everybody, right or wrong? But, so, since I can't speak on that and the safety concerns for my own daughter, then I'll just get to my next point. The recroachment, I don't know how to ask this, but they're saying that we might have to have some of our property, and we've been living there for eight years and never knew that our property line, it had a fence on our property before we even moved there, and they're telling us that we might have to recroach it for four and a half feet. And that means that the fence that was already there, it, it's, they're just trying to say that we're going to have to remove that, I guess, and remove our shed away and move the slab of cement that was already on the, the property when we moved there. We have to like, I guess, do away with some of that. And then the chicken coop that we have there, too, is on the line that they're trying to say that we have recroached or whatever. And I'm not familiar with all this terminology, I don't know what we're...
Are they saying some of your stuff is on the other property?
Yes, and we've had, we've lived there for seven or eight years now.
If it's on the other property, then that is...
But the fence itself, when we bought the house, was already in, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Yes, ma'am.
It was already there when we bought the house, and now that, all of a sudden, they're trying to do this re-lotting or whatever, they're trying to say that we need to do recroachment of four and a half feet? And that means that the shed that we put in our fence line and the slab of cement that's already been there when we bought it has to be taken away, and the chicken coop that we put in the fence line is recroaching in the new land, whatever.
Have you checked to see what your boundary lines are for your property? Have you been to see like if the previous owner did encroach on...
If you're encroaching on somebody else's property, is what?
But my, my thing is though, we, we've lived here for so long, and the fence line itself, we didn't put the fence there.
It could already been a problem, and it wasn't called when you purchased from someone or somebody that's...
Okay, but who do I speak with about that then?
You can call Planning and Zoning.
Planning and zoning, okay, and then we can't mention the safety concerns, so, and then the traffic, you already discussed that?
We've discussed that, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And, and they've approved for...
And we've already went over the nature and how everybody likes the country of it, and...
Right, the, the clear-cuts in, so within ten feet, any of the trees, unless they're dead, are preserved. Well, ma'am, I can't, just, just a minute, so, does that understand, ten feet?
Okay, I'm going to let her speak because I can't really speak on...
We got, we got one more person, thank you very much, Ms. Kessinger. Some, somebody else, you, we, all right. Yes, ma'am, if you, if you would state your name?
I'm Angie Skargans, twenty-six fifty Plum Springs Road, and I tell the truth.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I've been living...
Your last name is what?
Skargans, S-C-A-R-G-G-I-N-S.
And your, your comment?
About, I've been living there for almost fourteen years, and I don't know about the safety with the traffic and all that, but people flying down Plum Springs Road, it's a thirty-five speed limit. People go in forty-five, fifty, guaranteed, because we lost nine mailboxes in two years.
Okay.
It's coming down from the curve where they want to build the entrance.
Okay.
And you cannot even look around the corner, like when we come out of the property, you cannot even look who's coming up the road from, from, I mean, you know, Plum Springs Road up, it's just, it's, it's, I don't know.
Okay.
And we found out we have more property, too, because our, never mind, it's okay, it's, it's...
Okay, so I think, I think, I think what staff has said, that they have approved this, the, for this, for the traffic on Plum Springs Road?
Yeah, but did the, I'm sorry, sorry.
That's correct, that both the, so Plum Springs Road is a, a state-maintained road, so the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet did review this from the state's perspective as far as Plum Springs Road is concerned. And then the County Public Works Department also reviewed the new internal street configuration and its connection with Plum Springs Road, and they have determined that based on the number of lots and, and what is proposed, they have not requested any additional improvements.
So, Ms. Skargans, I'll, I'll try to add this, just to see if I can maybe clarify a bit. None, none of us that sit here are, are traffic engineers. We, we hire smart people to do what we don't know how to do. And, and, but at the same, by the same token, we do rely on those traffic engineers to tell us what needs to be done. And, and that has happened in this case. They have reviewed it, they do, they do some, some calculations that I don't even understand. But at the end of the day, calculations on the traffic have been done, and we rely on those calculations in order to make our decision.
But they don't lift that twenty-four hours a day, night and day?
Yes, ma'am, we, we understand.
We had people coming around the curve, almost took the house down, they hit the neighbor's yard, hit the house off the foundation a little bit because people just flying up the road.
All right.
And the traffic, like if there's going to be a hundred houses, let's say a hundred houses in there, two hundred more cars out on the road, Plum Springs is so tight. If there's a cop coming by, the sirens going to be, it's just that they are going to be wrecks every single day, well, not every single day, but people just, just kind of flying on Plum Springs, there's going to be more traffic with the hundred and houses coming in the road, it's just not...
Thank you very, thank, thank you very much. Is there any, we've heard about traffic, safety, sinkholes, is there something different anybody else would like to add? We, we'd like to hear from everybody, but something different? All right. Mr. Kilgore, would you come back up to the microphone? And I think there's some development plan conditions that you all have agreed to, if you would...
Well, before we do that, Dean, if it's okay, I mean, I think I'm still, I think I'm still on the one oh six, the three and a half, the three and a half and, and the eleven hundred square feet, and so I'm asking again if y'all will be willing to do that before we sign these other ones in.
Well, I think, did you talk to your clients, and are they in agreement with, or is what Mr. Volker said, are you all willing to, to change this amount?
That's, give me just one second, I mean... That, yeah, when we, when we discussed, we came back with our, you know, our best offer, that being a hundred and twenty lots and...
Okay, so a hundred and twenty lots? And we have, let's go back to square footage, you all agreed to, eleven hundred square feet, let's see.
Fifty percent one thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's your, so, Mr. Moore, would you ask...
I'll call them up and put, let one of them be under oath and agree to those changes that is nature.
Yes, sir, your name and address, please, sir?
Kenny Cravens, representing H.C. Developers, seven fifty-three Baker Fields Way.
All right, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you. You've heard, oh, go ahead, him, excuse me.
Mr. Cravens, you heard the, your lawyer make some commitments about changes to these development plan conditions, and I want to go over them with you. The maximum number of lots in this development will be a hundred and twenty.
Yes.
The exterior facades are listed, but will include that foundations will be built with brickstone or split-faced block.
That's correct.
You've agreed that half of all of the hundred and twenty lots will have a minimum of one thousand square feet?
Yes.
And the other half will have a minimum of eleven hundred square feet.
Yes.
We've corrected a typographical error that there will be, for each of the lots, at least a attached one-car garage.
That's correct. And there was one other typographical error, I believe, where the square footage was, when it said nine hundred, it also said exclusive of porches, it should say porches and garage.
Yes, you're exactly right. I believe those are all the items I made notes on. Do you agree, Mr. Cravens, to each of those changes?
Yes.
And do you speak on behalf of yourself as well as your business partner?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Are you, are these planning, like these one thousand square foot homes, or when they were at nine hundred, were they set to be three bedrooms, or were you looking at doing two, or do you know?
We actually have both, we've got a few, uh, pictures, a few slides should be in.
There are pictures in your packets, um, there's more supplemental, uh, let's see what page that starts on.
We've got a few examples, one of those homes is three bedroom, one is two, uh, two, two, all, all would require at least two baths.
Two full.
Two, two full bedrooms, two full baths, and one car garage are all, would all be the minimums on all of those homes.
Okay.
Those start on page thirty-three.
And those are just concepts, though?
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, that's, that's correct, I'm not saying that that's what exactly a home would look like, that they're just concept drawings.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cravens.
And I, not sure if I, I, I did have a few things I wanted to, to address and to say.
Just real quickly.
Sure, I, I, well, I mean, there were, there's probably twenty minutes of, of opposition, I just wanted to kind of-
No, we're not, we're not limiting you, but yes, sir, any-
Yes, yes, no, I just wanna let you know that, that John and I both, John and his wife Paula have raised their family here in Bowling Green. I've had a family here, fortunately, my wife died in twenty twenty, but I've been blessed with love again. My fiancee Cassie is here, she has two young boys, and we consider, we will stay in Bowling Green, and we, we are looking to better Bowling Green with this development. What we're looking at doing is finding more affordable housing.
All right.
You'll recall that there was a PBS, uh, segment just the other night that ran, and our local leaders stressed, Warren County Judge's Executive Doug Gorman stressed that we need more affordable housing. And he backs this plan. We are looking to find a way to do more affordable housing. This will accomplish that.
All right.
Cassie is out every day with clients who are looking in that sweet spot, two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. The average home price right now in Bowling Green is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The average median income is sixty-nine thousand dollars. Do you know what it would cost? You would need a ninety-four thousand dollar median household income to qualify for that three hundred and fifty thousand dollar house. So, there's a big disparity between those numbers. And that's all we're looking to do, is try to get these numbers to where we can find affordable housing. And I will just say this one last thing, if not here, where? And if not now, when?
All right, thank you, Mr. Cravens. Okay, appreciate your comments, sir, and thank you, Will. And so, Commissioners, we've heard our amendments to this request, and we will, uh, ask for a motion, uh, to approve or to deny this request, please, sir, please, Commissioners.
I make a motion to deny the proposed zoning map amendment, document number twenty twenty-five thirty-nine Z County, based upon testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed zoning map amendment is not consistent with adopted focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its noncompliance with objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is not in agreement with adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
So, so a second, so we have a motion to deny, and we have a second by Mr. Volker? So, a motion, Hamp, correct me, a motion that, to approve, to deny?
A yes vote denies?
Yes, correct, thank you.
A no vote indicates approval.
Okay. Matthew?
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham?
I'm gonna say yes, I will say this, though, the clients are very close, uh, they, we're, we're looking for opportunities to approve these, but, um, I just couldn't reach you on this one.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes.
Chair Warren?
Yes, the motion is for denial, and, uh, it will be up to the applicants to come back for a, if they choose. Our next item tonight is twenty twenty-five-
Chair Warren, one, one quick thing, so that recommendation will be final within twenty-one days?
Yeah, excuse me.
Unless the, somebody requests that the legislative body hears the item.
Plan Commission final action in twenty-one days unless a request is made for the legislative body to hear the item. Thank you, Rachel. And our next item tonight is twenty twenty-five forty Z County, Intermodal Transportation Authority Incorporated, Chair of Ron Bunch. Shh, 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 okay. We've got a couple more items. Uh, Chair of Ron Bunch has filed an application to rezone seven point nine one acres located at twenty-two fifty, twenty-two five Advantage Drive from Ag to RE Residential Estate to HI Heavy Industrial, was a general development plan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We had a pre-application meeting on June the twenty-fifth for the property that you mentioned. The current zoning is Ag and RE. The current land use is vacant, and the future land use is industrial. And again, the applicants are proposing to rezone from agriculture and residential estate to heavy industrial in order to expand the existing trans park. If we look at the bottom of the page, um, we have noted consideration regarding building orientation, and if we look over at the bottom of page two, oh, and I'm sorry, there was a concept that the applicants did supply that you can, can see now, but, looking down at the bottom of page two for the building orientation information, buildings in the trans park are mainly oriented to face the roadway or incorporate some type of screening or landscaping berm along the road frontage. For this reason, staff suggested that the applicants include a building orientation requirement for their structure nearest Advantage Drive, that might be when your concept comes in handy there, or that they incorporate a screening requirement for any side or rear-facing facade along Advantage Drive. The applicants communicated to, to staff that they do not have this land under contract and believe it is premature to limit the orientation of the building towards a particular street. Uh, there is no screening requirement proposed, but I will add that the proposed development will have to adhere to the minimum landscaping requirements for vehicle use areas per the zoning ordinance. Looking back at page one, here, the proposal does comply with majority of the criteria assessed in the review process and is generally compatible with the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommendation is approval pending public here, public, uh, hearing, testimony, and discussion. That's all we have for staff report, we have it, answer any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, Commissioners, any questions for staff?
So, Amy, if I hear you correctly, they, they didn't agree to the orientation, uh, but they also would, uh, still have to, uh, adhere to the landscape requirement, uh, once, once the development is, is, moves forward, correct?
Correct. Can I add one thing there, though?
Sure.
Um, they would have to do that, um, there is landscaping shown on the concept plan, a long Advantage Drive, but that's not required.
Got it.
So, the only requirement is, as far as screening the building, there, there's not a requirement that that landscaping along Advantage Drive be installed.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you, Tim. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Amy. Uh, Christian?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, is the applicant here or the representative?
Gaines Penn, eleven oh one College Street, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Gaines.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, I'll be brief, this is just, uh, further, uh, development of the Kentucky Trans Park. This is a uniquely situated piece of property. We do not have a current, uh, we, it's not under land sale right now, so that's the only reason that we are a little hesitant to say the building will be in a certain position, because we don't know what that, what that building might look like, and we really don't wanna lose an opportunity by hamstringing ourselves on that tonight. Plus, I would point out, that railroad track bisects the property, and it doesn't really do justice on a two-dimensional map, but that is a huge berm going up to sixty-eight eighty, and there's a fairly good-sized, uh, hill as, on about two-thirds of Advantage Drive, and so that will severely limit your placement of the building unless somebody has a desire to look at a hillside right out their window, so, uh, I don't think it's an issue.
Thank you, Gaines. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Penn?
I, I don't have it, just a comment, I know, Trans Park's been a very successful industrial site.
Yes, sir.
Out of curiosity, adding this additional acreage, what, what total acres does that give to Trans Park now, as far as total acreage development?
I'm, I'm, have that information at the tip of my tongue, but I don't-
It's over, it's over two thousand.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's way over, yeah, it's at least fifteen hundred.
Two thousand acres.
Yeah. It doubled the size in just the last couple of years, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Bunch, appreciate all you do for our community.
That's, uh, Mr. Wilson, Ron.
That's Ron Wilson. I'm sorry, Ron. What are you doing here?
Ron said, don't get it confused.
I thought you were at Westrum.
Last six weeks, he's the Executive Vice President of Economic Development.
I'm sorry, Ron.
The Chamber.
Congratulations. Uh, is there anyone in the audience tonight that has questioned or opposition to this request? All right. Commissioners, here you go, we call for a motion, please.
Make, go ahead.
I make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with the condition upon the general development plan, document number twenty twenty-five forty Z County, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted, adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Drain?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, sir.
Chair Warren?
Yes, sir, the motion is approved, Plan Commission final action in twenty-one days unless a request is made to the legislative body to hear the item. Any other items tonight?
I don't have any discussion items, Ben might have something, uh, back in the back. He says he's good.
Uh, September fourth, Commissioners, we only had one item, and it has been postponed, so we will meet, uh, one month from now. Ron apologized about that, I couldn't see you out there, and you got a good man there in Dean's Penn. All right, Mr. Storey, anything we need to?